All right, we have a meeting tonight of the Committee of the Whole for the City of Urbana. I call that meeting to order and I request that the role be called.
Councilmember Emmett.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We're going to review the minutes of the previous meeting from September 25th, 2017. Are there any corrections or additions about the minutes to be made by council members? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes of September 25th.
I'll second.
Okay, that's Eric Jacobson and Jared.
Miller.
Miller. It's been two weeks already, all right. It's all vague, it's all vague now, okay. And, all right, so are those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Are there additions to the agenda? I don't see anybody suggesting any, yes?
I would request that we move items 11 and 12 up to peer before number seven on the action items.
Yes, okay, that's two different resolutions. A presentation for Visit Champaign County, a marketing agreement, and a marketing agreement, Urbana Business Association. Are there any objections? I see none, all right, so we will make that adjustment. At this time, is there any public input? I have actually two forms of public input here. Does anybody else like to pass one to the clerk or to myself? All right, first we have from Bishop King, James Underwood, a desire to express the continual concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. So, thank you very much for those comments of that. And David Monk, would you like to come forward and share your thoughts?
David Monk, one one five Dulce Market. Prairie again. When I came here, I couldn't find the prairie. The ecosystem is down to almost nothing. You have a road that has six acres of potential prairie. I think we can do some interesting things without getting in the way of contracts that are written in concrete. As far as I can understand, the number four A mix, it's a low profile mix with little blue stem, Budalua, side oats, drop seed, and Canadian wild rice. Not an awfully aggressive thing. It's a real plus for the Department of Transportation. They have been worried about the amount of mowing that they're doing, the mowing costs in gas and equipment, and it also takes out the roadside plants. So, they've also put together a roadside group which is looking at plants, and they've had natural history survey, looking at remnant prairies between roads and railroad lines, and they keep getting lost. So, we not only didn't have much ecosystem, but it's been disappearing at a rapid rate. You have a very visible corridor, it's going to be used well, and that's the sort of place that it would be nice to have a prairie. I think some way we can, working with this city, when the contracting business is over, I assume that Urbana will be in charge of the road and the roadside, and it might be nice to plant broad leaves now because you have a drill which will drill a little corridor and then allow the seed to be tamped in by tamping wheels. So, we'll miss that if we miss the contract. But after the contract, and I think this is what Bill was looking for, was what do we do afterwards? And this is fairly non-aggressive sowing, so I think that with a little help from the friends, you could portion off portions of this and take 20 years to create a rather interesting prairie. So, I have some confidence in this, and I don't always have confidence in these sorts of things. I've had a lot to do in over the years. I would encourage you to think beautiful thoughts about biodiversity on that corridor. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, David. Any comments? Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Eric Jacobson.
You know, I do have, I do have one comment, just reflecting. There's a community, a village, or small city in northern Illinois that has, where people have prairies instead of lawns. What is, what is the name of the? Yeah. Does anybody know how they do that? What is the, like, the sort of?
You have to have people concerned. The University of Northern Iowa has prairies all over its campus.
Yeah.
It's mainly because they're with us, they have graduate division, they have known people working with it, and there's an atmosphere. So, it depends on that sort of thing.
But, okay, but, you know, we're not a university. I'm trying to think of a model that's like us. And what is the, do you know the name, remember the name of the community? Is that Prairie Crossing, or is it something else? It's near, it's very near Grayslake.
No, I'm not familiar with. Chicago is way ahead. It has lots of railroad beds that have been abandoned, and so they have rail trails all over the place, but they have habitat on either side.
Diane said to me, it is Grayslake. I thought it was near Grayslake, but no. So, it would be interesting to look at what is the governmental structure that supports that? Because I, I mean, I've been through there a little, well, my daughter taught, and my granddaughter went to a Montessori school there. So, we always, you know, saw this when we arrived and left and, yeah, I just thought it was wonderful. And if there's a way that we can encourage that here, in at least part of Urbana, I think that would be very, very cool.
It takes a crowd to do it, and the prairie plants are not big daisies, or hibiscus, or what have you. It's fairly simplistic. At this time of the year, it starts to go into a fall, and it doesn't look like a regular garden. So, you have to have people who understand that that is interesting and beautiful, and also it saves a gene pool. And there might be biochemicals in that that you really want in 500 years' time.
Thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
All right, we don't seem to have any presentations scheduled at this time, but we do have some staff reports. First one will be from Natalie Kenny Marquez on Communications. Who would you like to communicate with us?
Everything.
Oh, good thing, all right, everything. I like that.
I, because I think this is my first presentation too, not about the farmer's market, so I won't talk about that.
You're branching out.
So, I wanted to take a few minutes of your time to talk about communications and outreach, give you a little bit of an update about what's been going on over the past eight weeks since I've entered this role, and some of the new and exciting things we have going on. So, we've been off and running, we've accomplished a lot in eight weeks, which I'll explain here in a few minutes, but we still have a lot of work to do. Some of the things that we've been working on over the past eight weeks, or that I've tried to make a few of my goals, are some brand development, learning how we can effectively communicate and reach our audience, being better at content curation, telling our story, and doing all of that in a unified voice. So, to start all of that with an immediate goal of brand development, we've recently launched a style and brand guide for use internally, but also externally too. It's the first that I know of that we've had here within the city as an organization. It's a reference document, really, for staff to know what logos to use, and what situations, and what colors, certain fonts to use, and things like letterhead and memo, memos, business cards, emails, things like that. So, it's an ongoing process, it's not something that will happen overnight. We don't want to spend any money on this, so as things start to run out, like letterhead that we've ordered, or business cards that have already been printed, we'll order more with the new logo color palette, ensuring that we all have consistent fonts and things like that. It also helps us to communicate consistently, being consistent with our fonts and colors, and making sure all the departments are on the same page with that. Part of our community outreach includes effectively reaching our audience, that means getting out and about. We've attended events using some of our new items like this banner here. We've had tables at events and expos, attended festivals as a unified organization, Sweet Corn Festival is one example, where we had a booth there for many hours, had a chance to interact with our constituents. And then we've taken part in various community parades as well. It's a good-looking crew right there. Also, being effective communicators means we have to be good at content curation, and so to better do that, we launched an e-newsletter in August of 2017. In the first three months of the newsletter, we have over 500 subscribers, which is pretty good from, going from zero to 500. And if you haven't signed up yet, you can find the subscription link on our homepage under online services, to anyone that's watching or listening. We are also working to be more intentional about posting on social media, sharing department posts, coordinating with outreach regarding community events with folks like Jane at the UBA, or Jane at the VCC, sorry, Paris at UBA, et cetera, et cetera.
We're teacher.
Thank you. And internally as well, there's a lot of departments and programs that have social media accounts, and so we've been meeting as staff to have a unified front and help one another because we all have similar audiences, and we'll be very effective when we work together on that. Also, part of curating our content involves telling our story, and so we are rolling out, I think, our third year, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason Ligg at UP-TV somewhere, but we've been hosting a monthly talk show called It's All About You. That's where the name of the e-newsletter came from. It's a monthly program that lasts about 30 minutes. There's usually about four segments within each episode, and the segments last about eight to 10 minutes apiece. We get out in the community, we talk to folks that are having events, or new programs starting, or things on campus, things within the organization, introducing our staff and our elected officials. And so, it's been fun to do that, and we're building that up, especially with the launch of the e-newsletter. We include the video in there, as well as showing it on YouTube, on UP-TV, and through social media. The mayor has been a really great sport, and including a monthly update, video update in there, as well as Facebook Lives when we launch each monthly newsletter, so thank you for that, Mayor. And I do own another dress besides this one. It looks like I'm wearing it now, and it's on there, so it was a poor choice of photo. As we curate content, we're looking for effective ways to communicate our stories, and working towards doing that with a unified voice. And so, we're, staff are meeting regularly to be more strategic about our media buying and advertising. That's a cost savings measure right there when we're working together on these types of things, if we do buy advertising. And we're working on building a content calendar. That way, we're consistent and coordinated in our, on our communications efforts. In turn, that saves staff time and it saves money. So, to sum it up, we're busy, we're working hard, and we're working together to be more intentional and effective in our communications efforts. It's a long process, and so it's only been eight weeks since we've really started this concerted effort, but it's going to be ongoing. I'm happy to be focused on this role and to work with all of you. If you have any questions, just let me know. I'm happy to chat anytime as we progress, I'll come back and keep filling you in. Otherwise, keep posted on social media, website, subscribe to the newsletter, tell all your friends. And if you have any suggestions for content, let me know too. I'm always looking for ideas for people to meet and to interview, for the talk show, for the newsletter, for social media stories. Let me know.
Is that our official city hashtag?
It's one that a lot of the downtown folks use, that, I mean, I use it regularly too. It's on here, but that's not our, we don't have an official hashtag, yeah.
Somewhat beloved, but it's not official. All right, any other thoughts? Okay, yes.
Two things. One, I wanted to thank Natalie for everything she's done in the past eight weeks. We really have come a long way, and especially with the launch of the newsletter. Our goal is 50,000 subscribers to the newsletter, so we're gonna, we're gonna get there. Fifty. We're setting a high goal. And I also wanted to let people know, the council knows this, but I wanted to make sure the public knows, there was no change in the budget for this position. We have simply, Natalie has taken on a new title, new responsibilities, shifted some hours around, so as far as the cost of this position, it did not result in an increase in the budget. So, we're, we're very happy to have this, to have Natalie doing this job, and I really think it's going, it's already making a difference in how we project ourselves to the public. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Very important thing for us to be working on. Okay, the next staff report will be from one of our firemen. Fire Prevention Week. Fireman Phil.
Is there a timer to start this time, or, I don't see a timer up there, so I'll just go with it. Actually, this week is Fire Prevention Week. It's all, Fire Prevention Week, it changes every year, but in case anyone's wondering, a little trivia, it always includes the ninth. So, whatever week includes the ninth, whether the ninth is on a Sunday, middle of the week, or Saturday, that week is Fire Prevention Week. Today is, of course, the ninth, and what we're doing is, we go to the schools throughout the year, teaching fire safety and tornado safety, as I mentioned last time I spoke to you. And this week, what we do is, we really try to get in the homes. Our goal is to teach the children so that they go home and talk with their parents. But what we've done is, since I've been here, and I'm sure it happened long before I was here, is on Thursday night of Fire Prevention Week, we have Family Night, where we invite the families out, not just the students, but we encourage the families to come out 5:30 to 7:00, and we try to drive home that message as well. One of the things we do to get the families out is we feed them. Feed them, they will come. And that's what we do. We feed the public free pizza and soft drinks, and, you know, we have that opportunity to hand out fire safety literature, things like that. But then also, we do things that include other aspects of the fire department. Last year, we did a technical rescue presentation. This year, we're going to do a live burn. We're going to let people see what it looks like if, Jared's over there like, "Yeah, I'm in, I'm in." But we're going to do a live burn, and let people, we're going to demonstrate what it's like if you have a house fire that does not have a sprinkler, as well as one, if, how the fire would react if you did have a sprinkler. And once people come out, they have an opportunity to see that. They also have an opportunity to get their hands on an extinguisher, because we're going to do an extinguisher simulation as well. You could get an extinguisher, and we'll start the fire. It's controlled, don't worry, it's not just wild. We control the fire, but we let the public get a chance to get their hands on an extinguisher and extinguish a flame as well. Again, this Thursday at 5:30, we'll start serving pizza and soft drinks. At about 6:15, start having people go out to the demonstration. And another thing, the children are able to color a picture of Sparky, get a ticket, and they have a chance to win a bicycle. We're giving away two bicycles at night, and the children have an opportunity to win a bike. And we give a helmet with a bike too, can't give a bicycle without a helmet, safety first. And I think that's it.
Very interesting. Where's the rally point, and where's the burn?
The burn is going to be on the south end of Lincoln Square, right outside Tang Dynasty. We're going to block off that portion of the parking lot Wednesday afternoon, so that Thursday, we can actually, we're working with Effie Moran, they're actually going to come in and build the props that we're going to use to burn, and so it'll be on the south end of the parking lot. Lincoln Square is where everything will happen. We'll serve pizza in the food court at Lincoln Square, and we'll have the bounce house there for the children. We'll have, like I said, the coloring and the bicycle draw.
I saw that you had a lot of props already being brought into the Lincoln Square Mall.
Yes, the props in Lincoln Square Mall, what we're doing throughout the week is, we set up, and we have different disciplines in fire safety that we'll be exhibiting at Lincoln Square Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The children, there's a crawler on smoke prop, fire safety quiz, storytime with Sparky, you know, those different things, stop, drop, road station, the safety house, the smoke house. And after the children go through those things, then we have the bounce house light as well. We set up at Lincoln Square, and the schools come in to us. And we have schools, our goal is to reach all of the Urbana schools, which we do, but then we tend to get people from surrounding cities, you know, the smaller, outer, outlining cities of Urbana. And sometimes from on the other side of Wright Street, we'll get some daycares and preschools come over and take part in what we do at Lincoln Square.
Great, yes, Eric.
So, just as a preface, I think the educational stuff that you do here in going house to house on smoke detectors and so forth is fantastic. I wonder if there are statistics that tell us that over the years that we've been doing this, we've actually seen the incidence of fires go down? Is, are, do we see that?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that it's been quite a while since I've been woken up in the middle of the night to come to a working fire here in Urbana, so I like to believe that that's part of our efforts, but I haven't really, I haven't done an actual study to get numbers, but I can get some numbers for you.
I think it would be great to, to see that, you know.
Okay, and, yeah, our goal, you know, as I've said before, is to help people experience the only fire that doesn't burn, which is a prevented fire. So, that's our goal. We don't have a whole lot of them, so that's a good thing.
That's great. Excellent.
I made that up myself. I thought it was pretty clever at the time.
Part of it doesn't burn. Conundrum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to be now looking at the two items that we've rescheduled at this time from our agenda list. So, we're going to talk about Resolution Number 2007-10-069R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement with Visit Champaign County for the year of 2016, oh, 17 to 18. All right, so Jane, are you going to present, make a presentation, and Brandon Boyes?
I'll just introduce the item and then turn things over to Jane.
Very good.
In the packet, council is asked to consider a promotional and marketing agreement with Visit Champaign County. This is for the current fiscal year, 2017-18. This agreement would provide the full amount of funding to VCC that council authorized in the current budget, and it'd allow VCC to continue their promotion of Champaign County to visitors traveling 50 miles or more. We would be a gold level sponsor with this sponsorship amount, and would continue to be represented on the VCC board by Communications Coordinator Natalie Kenny Marquez. So, yes, Jane Deluce, President and CEO of VCC, is here to present to you this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me have the opportunity to talk. Because this is for the purpose of the agreement, I'm going to be super short and hope to come back at a future time and actually do our annual report when we have that ready and all of that to go. So, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being a gold partner of Visit Champaign County, it's very important, and a major shout out to Natalie, who does a fantastic job on our Board of Directors representing the City of Urbana. She does very well. I had given to you a flyer that is about who we are, and that's geared to our new council members, just to have that as a reference sheet. We are the certified destination management organization for the entire Champaign County area, plus Arthur, Allerton Park, and Monticello, who are regional marketing partners of our, to promote this region. We focus on sales, marketing, and destination development. In regard to sales, you can see the markets that are there, which we focus on sports, the business market, group travel, primarily international, and also the leisure market. And then for marketing, we focus on every promotion that you can imagine that tells the story of our outside of ordinary community. With you tonight, you have a copy of the new visitors' guide, and there are 70,000 of those that are printed. Those are distributed at our area rest stops around the state of Illinois. Those are also distributed at area businesses, and upon request, whether people want them and ask for them on the phone, or by email, or website, et cetera, and then as well as when we go to trade shows. So, when our sales team is at trade shows, they use the visitors' guide as our main print piece. Also with you, which was a very exciting honor, is a copy of the Midwest Living magazine. And yes, everywhere we go, we do tell people we are the greatest food town in Midwest, and just to make sure everybody is aware that that was a competition among many states, including our other Big Ten university towns, not that we're competitive or anything. Not only did Champaign-Urbana represent Illinois, we beat out some very big cities, and it was capped at 750,000 people and less in terms of who they marketed. It was vetted by Midwest Living Magazine, so they are the ones that actually selected Champaign-Urbana, and then we headed up the voting, which then became an online voting. We were concerned about that because we were competing against these other major markets, but hey, don't underestimate the small guys, because people here really stepped up and voted, and you could vote every day. We also solicited our other DMOs, the Destination Management Organizations around Illinois, and they figured if they weren't the winners, that they would support us. So, we had a lot of votes from people around Illinois, as well as friends across the country. So, on September 9th, when they arrived, we started the day at the farmer's market and celebrated there at the market at the square, and Mayor Marlin did a terrific job with bags. I believe with her pairing up with Mayor Finan of Champaign, they did beat out the staff of Midwest Living. I don't know if it was rigged or anything, but they beat, you know, you guys won, fair and square, absolutely. And then we gave out, there was tons of information given out. The market was tremendous to work with the market staff to be there and to be a part of that. Midday was at the Blind Pig Brewery in downtown Champaign area, and then it happened to be the day of a home football game, so ended the day at Grange Grove. And just talking to people and being able to talk about our food scene around the area, I can't describe the magnitude of this coverage, because there are 4 million subscribers to Midwest Living, so this is a lot of people seeing us in this, this issue right here, and then the follow-up will be in January, February, which will be a recap of the September one. So, I just wanted to say thank you for, for your support. Again, I'll have more information to share with you. I'm happy to answer any questions, but because we are such an outside of ordinary community, I do want to give a presentation to the mayor that is our outside of ordinary kind of logo, that is a very popular T-shirt, and so we've had that framed, and would like to present that to Mayor Marlin at this time on behalf of the City of Urbana. Thank you very much for everything.
Great. Mayor, are you going to go grab that thing? Make it, make it yours. Okay, very good.
Maybe over there.
Let's commemorate this with a good photograph.
There's Dennis in the background.
That's what happens when you have a communications coordinator, they do all these things, all right?
On the ball, that's a really great thing to see.
Was there comments?
Very, very good.
Or questions? Did you need anything?
Yes, Jared.
Hi, Jane, how's it going?
Good, thanks.
Uh...
So I just had one question about, you know, the, the impact of winning it and, you know, Midwest Living's got a lot, large subscriber base, but I don't imagine we'll see, you know, is it kinda, I mean, you tell me, you know, if you know, is it the kinda thing where people are gonna like catch this issue, open and be like, well, we gotta go there now?
Right.
Or is this, you know, gonna be kind of a trickled increase in, in visitation over the next year or so?
Definitely a trickle. And what will happen with it, too, is that we're partnering with the Illinois Office of Tourism to include it in a lot of our, our marketing materials. And so, food tourism, as we know, is a very popular way that people travel. And what we plan to track is be able to, be able to get from not only reader subscription, because the ad that is in the Midwest Living magazine, that we'll be able to see subscribed readers from that, like that they'll call and ask for a guide and be able to come here. The hard part about it, I think the point you're speaking to, is you can't, it's hard to measure and say, oh, we had, you know, twenty percent more people come to this area to eat food. We're just gonna have to be able to use it in our materials as part of our branding. But we've already started using it in the materials that, when we are talking to like meeting planners, if you're picking our community over another mid-sized market, and we can say we have great meeting facilities, but in addition, we have great food, it's gonna be a selling point that we've already started using at trade shows. So we'll, we'll incorporate in our sales efforts as much as, as our marketing.
Sure. So one thing that just came to mind when you were saying that is, what, have you talked to any of our local restaurateurs about maybe doing a promotional campaign with it? Where, you know, if somebody brings in a copy or somebody, you know, mentions it?
Right.
You know, you, you know, some detail that makes it known that a customer saw this or appreciated it and came because of that to offer a discount for a meal or something?
Mm-hmm. Very good point, and we're gonna try to work with them, especially when we host the next Restaurant Week, which will be in January, and be able to tie those two together. So we're people coming in for the Restaurant Week, people coming in for Foodie, so it's gonna be kind of a combination effort. But I'll double check. I think that we've already got some of the, some of the input back from the restaurant people, that they've like already heard people talking about it locally, but we'll definitely have to work on that for them to, to get visitor feedback from outside. And thank you.
And Jane, is it, is it possible, do you think, to have a window sticker that announces this award, that you could pass out to restaurants and businesses in this community, so people coming in would notice?
Dennis, you are always thinking. That's a great idea. I love that. Yeah, I, we hadn't thought about that, that I'm aware of. That's my marketing staff.
I bet a lot of restaurants would love to have that, as well as, as hotels.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely. Good, very good point. Thank you.
Yeah, Diane.
Well, I just wanted to share a little story. On, on the ninth, when the Midwest Living came to town, several of their staff, their magazine staff were here, including the publisher of the magazine. And Mayor Deb Finan and I read a joint proclamation declaring September ninth as Midwest Living...
Greatest food town.
Greatest food town.
Day.
And the publisher of the magazine was so thrilled with getting a proclamation, she asked if she could have two extra copies, complete with the gold seals and original signatures, so she could send one to their New York office, one to their Chicago office, and have one in their Des Moines office. So I think this probably was the first time they'd actually had that happen. So, so they, they had an unusual experience, too.
They were very excited about that. And just to follow up on that, we've confirmed for the tour in Des Moines, we're gonna do a tour of Meredith Corporation. I just got from their publisher on that, coming up in November. So, it's good.
Boy, all these tremendous links building success. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now we have some things to talk about as a committee. Does anybody have any thoughts about the resolution, and is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2017-10-069R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement with Visit Champaign County for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Great, thank you, Jared.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jane Hazen makes a second. Other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and this will be going to City Council. All right, thank you so much. Okay, so our next item is also a marketing and promotional resolution, which is Number 2017-10-070R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement with Urbana Business Association. And Brandon, are you gonna also present this one?
Just, just briefly. Again, council's asked to consider this promotional and marketing agreement with the Urbana Business Association. The agreement, again, provides the full amount budgeted by council in the current fiscal year budget, and will allow UBA to continue to serve its business members by making Urbana a dynamic place to live, work, and do business. And we have Paris Baldarada, UBA Executive Director, here this evening as well.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I am actually gonna keep this short and sweet as well. I know I've presented several times this year, and I don't want to be too repetitive, but my presentation is gonna give a quick overview of what we've done over the last year, but also highlight some things that we have coming up within the next year as well. So, we are a non-for-profit, 501(c)(6) with a board of twelve business members. Okay, so one of the big things that we kind of got going again this year was meetings with different chambers and business associations. So what we like to do is get together and broaden our networks, improve our community relations, and then be able to communicate and collaborate with chambers, business associations, local government teams. I also expanded it to park districts, school districts, and other promotional organizations. So this allows us to all get together, brainstorm, and just communicate together throughout the year. So we do it quarterly, so we probably have one coming. Mohammed's gonna, Mohammed Chambers is supposed to host the next one. So we're trying to get a date set for that, and then we'll be having one in the next month or so. As far as membership goes, we have a hundred and twenty-seven member businesses. And our current activities, we do the co-op marketing, which we purchase advertising at discounted rates where members can buy into that and get in front of people at a less expensive rate than they normally would be able to on their own. We have our networking events, which is our Connections Over Coffee and Connections Over Cocktails, ribbon cuttings, workshops, and our Talk of the Town e-newsletter. And I know I've talked about those things a lot this year, but some things that we are looking to do this year for future plans are opening up some new levels of membership. Currently, we have, our lowest level of membership is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for one to five employees. But what I would like to do is implement an owner-operated level. We have a lot of startups that is just owner-operated, that maybe the hundred and seventy-five dollar level isn't affordable, since they're just getting started. So we're looking at doing a hundred dollar entry level for those businesses to be able to participate and, you know, take advantage of our benefits and services. And then an investor level, which is actually one of a bigger level where people will get, one of the ideas, and we're still working on this, is they would be able to invest in the UBA and be a sponsor of all events, and take advantage of a lot of different services that maybe, that aren't in place right now. And then the Member Appreciation Program, that is a program we're gonna put into place where we take the time once a week to go out and visit our member businesses. You know, right now, we always get bogged down and really busy, and we don't have a chance to go out and visit our businesses. So what we'll be able to do is put a goodie bag together with UBA swag and go talk to our members, let them know what's going on, what's the newest and latest thing that they can take advantage of with the UBA membership benefits and services. So we just wanna make sure that we're connecting with our members on a weekly basis, more than we do now. And of course, we have our events, our annual events, the Encore Urbana Wine Festival, Market in the Square, Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which was new this year. And that was, that was a lot of fun. And then if I wanna, actually, we can talk a little bit more about Sweet Corn Festival this year. It was very, very successful. We put a lot of changes into the festival, which I presented on, made it more local, brought in the local entertainment, incorporated our downtown bars and the restaurants and the businesses, and made it more family-friendly. And it was, it was a success. I have heard very positive things from the community regarding it. And we're just gonna continue on that path and keep that, those changes in place, and then moving forward with even better changes. I will be back at a later date to talk more details on Sweet Corn Festival, when I have more time. We do sponsor a lot of events throughout the year, so we've got the CU Jazz Festival, Food Truck Rally, First Friday's Grand Prix, and the CU Folken Roots Festival, which is coming up very soon as well. And then for future plans, we're actually gonna work with the Urbana Public Arts Coordinator to do more activities and get more arts into the downtown businesses and the bars, and some more local live entertainment there, working to do with the Realtor Tours, with the, with Brandon's department, slipping my mind right now. And then we are doing, partnering with the Urbana Public Library to do Halloween events. So we actually just went around today, talking to our downtown businesses. We're gonna do trick-or-treating for the kids. So the businesses that participate will have a balloon outside their business, the kids will go in with their parents, you know, trick-or-treat. And then there's some activities also going on at the library throughout the day for the kids. And then the evening, the library's also going to do zombie prom. So we're helping them out, promoting that, yeah. So.
That's gonna spill out into the street, I bet, right?
So, that's all I have for today. Our next networking event is a coffee, and it's at Consolidated Communications on October 24th from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. Any questions?
Great, okay, yes, Mary, Alice.
So I know that we're often talking about downtown businesses and different anchor institutions down there. I'm curious, we have kind of a couple of other spots that we have business, right? Down on South Philo, there's a whole area down there. There's an area over on East Campus area. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit in terms of how you work with those businesses?
So, actually, last summer, with the Gregory Street area on campus, we partnered with Champagne Center Partnership to do a summer marketing program where we promoted the campus businesses. And it was Thirteen Thursday, so every Thursday, those businesses would have specials, and we would promote them and go, go in and hang balloons and promote that. So there's different things, we'll either partner with other organizations or try to focus on those areas. So I'm glad you brought that up, too. I didn't put it in my presentation, but a lot of times, we're putting in new programming or promotions and working with the different business districts as well. So I don't have anything specifically planned at this time. We're starting our new fiscal year, so, and just got off Sweet Corn, so now we're in that strategic planning process and seeing exactly how we're gonna move forward with that this year.
Do you know how successful the event was in the summer? I know it's really hard to bring more business down to campus areas during the summer.
The feedback that I heard from the campus businesses, they did see on those Thursdays pickup and traffic in their businesses, 'cause they were offering promotions. So we would, you know, promote what sales or different deals that they had going on on those Thursdays. And then actually, also, we had three different events on campus throughout the summer promoting it as well. So one of them, we had a karaoke event at Kennedy Club, and that was a really successful one. We probably had about seventy-five to a hundred people there for that event, which was promoting the campus area.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other, other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, do it.
Sorry, but it's more about the budget. I'm just curious about...
Then go ahead.
Okay, so the, I think that the ask is for sixty-two thousand, which is already in the fiscal budget. What I was curious about was, in terms of the very first thing, it says income, administrative income, staffing, and total operations income is thirty-five and thirty-five, which is seventy thousand dollars. So I was just curious about those numbers.
That was probably the previous, the end of the previous fiscal year?
It says budget for 2016, 2017. So is that the seventy thousand from last year?
Yeah, so that was the actual, the 2016-17 P&amp;L, showing what we ended at. And then there's a 2017-18 approved budget. That, I think we're, now we have it rounded up a little bit.
Actual.
Yeah.
So this is the older budget? It's not the future? It's not the existing year?
Right, I need to update that. Yeah, I think that, I haven't changed that number from when?
Well, the approved budget next year does say sixty-three thousand.
Oh, you're right, you're right. Okay, I was just off, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Others? All right. Any other comments? Should we sustain a motion here?
I'll move that we send Resolution 2017-10-070R to City Council with recommendations for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Second invite, Eric. Is there further comment or discussion? Okay, all those in, in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? So, okay, that passes. That go forward to the City Council. Thank you then again for the very good presentations. Okay, now we go back to the top of the previous old agenda order, and we'll go to Number Seven on the agenda, Ordinance Number 2017-10-058, an ordinance revising the annual budget, ordinance for fiscal year 2017-18. This is Budget Amendment Number Three regarding rebudgeting and miscellaneous items. Yes, Elizabeth.
So I'm, I'm sure you've noticed that you have three pages of adjustments to the budget, which seems like quite a lot. The vast majority of these changes relate strictly to timing issues. So, for example, with capital improvement projects, because our fiscal year ends June 30 in the middle of the construction season, it's fairly common to have timing issues in terms of how we budget funds for those projects. There are a number of equipment purchases included that are similar situation. Another issue with timing is the receipt and expenditure of grant funds. Sometimes we don't receive the, the reimbursements when we expect to for grants, and sometimes the timing of the expenditures varies. And we have generally the same issue with payments under development agreements as well, where we would have bud, thought they might possibly be expended before June 30, but in fact, that will occur after June 30. There are some other changes that are not strictly timing. One small one that's worth pointing out is we will move fifty-two hundred and eighty dollars from a line item for a position in the finance department to pay for temporary employment services. Because of the way our city code is written in relation to the budget, moving money between a category of personnel expenditures to another category requires council approval. So it would seem like a kind of routine thing, but it does require your approval. We also are adding funds for greenscape projects and the Legacy Tree Program, and both of those are programs where the city receives donations over the course of the fiscal year. And once the year is closed, we budget those for expenditure in the next fiscal year. And of course, we don't know what the total is until the year is done, so we can't easily budget for it. So I, I think for the most part, that is pretty straightforward, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So will there be any questions for Elizabeth? Apparently, we are, feel fairly satisfied and trustworthy that, that what we're watching is a function of just the very factors that you mentioned. All right. So is there a motion?
I'll move to send this ordinance to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Second it, or third it.
Yeah, I think you ended up third there.
Yeah. Three and a half. Two and a half.
I like the enthusiasm, though. It's a good, it's a good sign. All right, so any other comments or discussion at this time? Okay, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. That's gonna go forward to City Council. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Next item on the agenda is Item Resolution Number 2017-10-066R. It's a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement. This agreement is between the city of Urbana and Parkland Community This agreement is between the City of Urbana and Parkland Community College and regarding, uh, ARMS, ARMS system. And we have our IT Department head here to assist us in understanding this.
Sure. Um, I will give just a moment of background to this intergovernmental agreement. Back in the 1980s, Urbana started using a record system for police, which was written by Urbana programmers. After about 10 years of using the system on our own, the Champagne Police and University of Illinois Police both joined on. And the three agencies were sharing information. Then about four years ago, uh, decisions were made that then expanded the scope of that to include the Rantoul Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. So at this point, the five largest police organi, uh, police agencies in the county are all using this coordinated system. Urbana is the lead agency, meaning that we have administrative responsibility for it. So when this came up in the sense that Parkland Police also wanted to have access to the system, the appropriate mechanism for that was an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Parkland College. Is that stated properly, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. So that's what you have in front of you. Basically, we're allowing them to view police records from the other five agencies, um, for the purposes of helping them to do, you know, do their jobs better and more efficiently.
Are there questions? Yes, Bill.
Um, so as far as the type of information the ARMS, uh, system contains, it's more than just public information, right? It could be some private information and, um, reasons people were stopped but never arrested, things like that.
Think about it as every interaction that the police have with, with everyone is documented in the system. Correct that, uh, there are numerous layers of security in terms of accessing that information. Basically, there's a, law enforcement agencies have a sort of separate set of criteria they have to meet to even get access to this type of privileged information.
Okay. Yeah, there was a reference to, uh, the ARMS security policy that they'd have to abide to. Um, we didn't get copy, but we probably, you know, it's a probably a pretty rigorous security policy, I guess.
It is, and it's inherited down. The FBI actually publishes, uh, something called the Criminal Justice Information System Policy. So that's like 150 pages of documentation on rules, which are then inherited down to the state of Illinois and then down to us.
And does the ARMS system log anytime that anyone, uh, accesses information in read-only fashion?
Complicated answer. Sometimes, uh, we log some, access to some of that information, not all of it. There's trade-off of performance against, uh, record management.
This seems like in order to actually verify the security policy, you'd have to have some way of, um, kind of, you know, spot checking to make sure people weren't accessing things when they didn't need to be.
That's part of it. A bigger part of the security policy is people going through background checks before they're allowed to have access to it. Also has to do with the physical security of where they're accessing it from. So they have to be in a room that's behind a locked door and there have to be blockers on the screens. If there's, uh, if someone can walk up to the window and kind of peer through the window and see their screen, that's a no-no. So there's, a lot of that has to do with the physical, uh, aspect of the space.
Okay. Thanks. Um, I have a question too. Is, is there a, uh, participation fee that Parkland College, uh, would be, um, sharing or something with the city? Or is this not, this is a service?
The decision was made, uh, by the ARMS Policy Board to do this at no cost.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, send Resolution number 2017 dash 10 dash 066R. Resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement, agreement between City of Urbana Park Community College regarding the ARMS system. Forward to council for approval. I'll second it.
Okay. That was Jared Miller and, um, Dan Hazen. All those, uh, other questions or comments or discussion? Yes, Bill.
Um, just for the benefit of the public, part of it was, um, that none of the other agencies, um, had any objections and nobody registered any objections, any of the other partner agencies. So Urbana has control of ARMS, but, um, as part of this agreement, um, they have the right to object if they didn't want Parkland to have access to it. Nobody has, I guess.
That's correct. They all voiced their opinion, support for Urbana to enter into this agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So we'll just make it into the vote. Uh, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? None. So that therefore is forwarded to City Council. Thank you very much, Sanford. Um, next on the agenda is Resolution number 2017 dash 10 dash 067R. A resolution amending the Housing Rehabilitation Program Operational Guidelines. As originally authorized by Resolution 2015 dash 05 dash 023R. City of Urbana Housing Program Manual Program, Manual Program Years for 2015 to 19. Community Development, Matt.
So before the council tonight is an amendment to the Housing Program Manual. And as a bit of background about the Housing Program Manual, um, it's something that's used primarily to define how the City of Urbana uses its Community Development Block Grant Funds, abbreviated CDBG. And those funds are provided to grantee communities throughout the country and have a very wide range of flexibility. They can be used for a lot of different things, a lot of different rehab projects, infrastructure projects, serving many different target, um, target populations within communities. Um, so HUD also encourages communities to develop a housing program manual to specify which populations, um, are being targeted for these funds and where they're going and, um, which income brackets they're primarily benefiting. And HUD leaves that up to the community to do that, provided we have a housing program manual. And the resolution tonight would, um, would amend that manual to add to the Acquisition Disposition Program and allow the City of Urbana to demolish blighted and vacant properties and without acquisition of those properties and not meeting the low and moderate income national objective, which is met through all of the other, um, projects within the Housing Program Manual. And this stems from, um, a HUD monitoring, um, which HUD staff from the Chicago Field Office came to the City of Urbana, um, and monitor us in May and noticed that we were using, um, CDBG funds to demolish vacant and blighted structures within the city as part of our blight reduction program and using CDBG funds to augment the funds that we had received from the state. And we had done that, because we partnered with Habitat on that program, we had done that to meet the low-income housing objective through the Community Development Block Grant, which is in the past what we've traditionally done. But because we used the low moderate income housing objective, giving the, giving the properties to Habitat after they were demolished, there was an expectation by HUD that we redevelop those properties within a, a short period of time. And when HUD noticed that it could take a little bit longer because of the state's rules, um, they recommended that we instead meet the spot blight reduction national objective instead of the housing creation national objective. Really what this does, it doesn't change much of what we will do on the ground. It will basically move the mile marker up, the finish line. Um, in the past, with the low moderate housing objective, we would, we would only be able to close out activities after Habitat had built a house on the property and sold it to an income eligible household. Now we can close out the project and satisfy HUD's requirements with this, um, proposed amendment simply by eliminating, um, a vacant and blighted structure on a property within the city. So at the regular meeting of the Community Development Commission, um, last week, the CDC recommended unanimously that the, um, City Council forward, or the Committee of the Whole forward the, um, resolution to the City Council with recommendation for approval with a suggested change that would provide staff with a little bit more flexibility in how this, uh, Acquisition Disposition Project would be administered. The amendment is described in the memorandum and as an attachment to the memorandum. In terms of fiscal impacts, this amendment would not, um, commit any funds immediately. It would simply offer a wider range of activities that city staff could undertake. Um, among these, uh, wider array of services, it would allow the city to eliminate, um, vacant and blighted structures without owning the structures and the associated maintenance along with them, um, and help the city to remain compliant with federal regulations and recommendations. So with that in mind, um, the options before the Committee of the Whole are to approve the resolution, approve with suggested changes or not approve resolution. And staff in the Community Development Commission recommend that the Committee of the Whole forward the resolution to the Urbana City Council with recommendation for approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
So would anybody like to, um, yes, Jared, ask a question?
Hey, Matt, how's it going?
Good.
Hey. Uh, so, just trying to pour through this earlier and I'm a little exhausted from my weekend, uh, this weekend. So it's kind of dense stuff and I just want to make sure that I fully understand what, what exactly it is that we're doing. And could you, uh, just elaborate a little bit on, uh, the, the actual change that's gonna be happening? Is it just this paragraph three of section 11.1 with the strike through of the owner thing as far as, uh, uh, the acquiring or acquisition and?
It would, it would be adding, it wouldn't be eliminating anything to the existing text. It would be adding everything under 11.8.
Okay. So that's, that's everything that's being added?
Exactly.
Okay. So I got you. Um, so it gives me, uh, question is to, you know, in that, in that, uh, in that part of the acquisition, but it's, you know, so where, where does the legal authority come from to demolish a structure that is not owned by the city?
It, it would come from a court order.
Okay.
Um, that's, it would either be, at this point, it would either be through a court order or through the city acquiring property for the purposes outlined in this program and then demolishing.
A court order we would have to seek out.
Yes. Yeah. The, the legal division would, um, undertake the process for that, um, on the city's behalf. Um, I have talked with, uh, the Assistant City Attorney and he has mentioned, um, the possibility of partnering with agencies that we've worked with before, um, and know and trust to undertake an agreement, but that would be under limited circumstances.
Gotcha. And then one last, uh, one last thing. Could you expand a little bit on spotlight and, and/or the idea of spot basis analysis? What, how do we arrive at that decision?
So that, that goes back to the federal regulations about the Community Development Block Grant Program. And there are three national objectives, one, the main one being benefiting low moderate income people. Um, this one, um, discusses blight reduction. And that can either be on a, a spot basis or an area basis. And an area basis would require the city to declare, uh, a portion of the city to be blighted and very few communities do that. It, it takes, they're pretty rigorous criteria to define an area as blighted. So the alternative to that is on a spot basis. So we can basically define spot as, spot blight as being a single condemned structure. And that could be citywide. And these funds could be used to go through and, um, if that structure's condemned, demolish it.
Got you. I got it.
Okay.
And, and I have a question then, Matt. So then if, uh, if, uh, if an individual property is demolished, there's not an obligation according to these regulations to, um, recreate a structure that would be affordable to low-income people?
We certainly would like to do that. And in every instance, that's what we're striving for. What this addition to the Housing Program Manual would give us is the flexibility to, um, not pursue that option if we can't, but still eliminate a dangerous structure that could be a threat to a neighborhood, um, if a community housing development organization isn't willing to take that property.
So it reduces a health or safety hazard perhaps in a community or neighborhood or on a street. Uh, and if possible, we would seek to put a, how, to build a home or have a house built by an agency that would be affordable?
Absolutely. We do everything we can to try to make that happen.
Okay. Bill?
Um, so this could, um, it disqualifies some of those properties from, um, meeting the, um, percentage that we need to apply for the, of the HUD program money to low and moderate income housing. But is there, is it like 70% of the CDBG money has to go toward that?
That's right.
Okay. And do you know what percentage we're at now?
We're at 100%.
Right, 100%.
None of our activities benefit any other national objective. And we don't anticipate, yeah, getting anywhere close to 30%. We anticipate this being done on an as-needed basis, but just having this tool in our toolbox could be valuable.
And then, um, is the, the blight reduction program money already spent or already, um, already allocated for specific properties?
It is. The abandoned properties program, we still do have, um, we're identifying our last couple of projects for that. But we were able to identify, um, and demolish 16 properties using the blight reduction program and transfer those to Habitat.
Okay. So, um, if, if we've spent all, if we've already used all that, then is there still a need for, uh, a mandatory three-year holding period on anything else we do? I thought that was the only thing that really involved the mandatory period.
That was. Um, and, you know, that's, that's one way that we could run into the timeliness issue of using these properties. Um, you know, it could be a property that there's a vacant structure on and if we use the low mod housing benefit to try to take down that structure and we aren't able to transfer it to Habitat or another organization, we could run into an issue that way too. You know, it's, it's, the, the IDA, um, three-year restriction is one way that could give us timeliness issues, but there are other ways too.
Okay. So in general, this would just, uh, give you, give us more flexibility in accomplishing those same sort of goals and, and on a broader basis citywide?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion.
I move sending this resolution to council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you, Alice. Mary, Alice.
Alice, Mary.
Mary, Alice. Woo. All right. And, uh, any further comment or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none? Okay. Thank you. That passes.
Dennis?
Yes?
Did we lose Aaron?
He hasn't responded in the last couple of votes, so we might have.
Okay. I was just curious.
He, I understand that there was a health, uh, he was maybe how he felt was one of the reasons why he didn't come today, so there might be that. He is, to be specific.
I, I hear neither snores nor groans from Aaron.
Okay. Thank you for asking, though. Your concern is appreciated. Last item tonight is Resolution 2017 dash 10 dash 068R. A resolution approving and authorizing an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement as was with Rosecrance, um, for the year 2017-18. Are you gonna do that one also, Matt?
So, uh, no staff from Rosecrance was able to make it tonight, but if you do have any questions, I would be more than happy to pass that along and get an answer to you, um, before, uh, the council meeting next week. But before the Committee of the Whole tonight is a new subrecipient agreement for tenant-based rental assistance for Rosecrance Champagne Urbana. Rosecrance and their predecessor organization, um, Community Elements, has been a partner of the Urbana Home Consortiums for tenant-based rental assistance since 2010. And we've provided, uh, roughly $277,000 to those organizations through, through the home program. roughly $277,000 to those organizations through, through the home program for tenant-based rental assistance since that time. And under the current agreement, we anticipate that it will run out of funding this month. And with that in mind, Rosenkrantz has requested from the City of Urbana a new $30,000 subrecipient agreement for tenant-based rental assistance through the home program. The proposed agreement would allow Rosenkrantz to continue their, their TBRA program and continue to help their clients to transition from shelter or supportive housing situations into the private rental market and building their self-sufficiency. At the last Community Development Commission, this meeting, the CDC reviewed the agreement and recommended approval of the, city council approval of the resolution. In terms of fiscal impacts, committing $30,000 in home funds would reduce the amount of home funds that the City, that the Urbana Home Consortium has for its 16-17 funds. But the City of Urbana, out of the amount given to the entire consortium, the City of Urbana has received almost $200,000 more through its 17-18 allocation. And no city general fund, no city general funds are being used through this program. And the subrecipient agreement would help us to meet our home commitment deadline, which we must use all of our 16-17 funds by next July, or commit all of our 16-17 funds by next July. Tenant-based rental assistance has been identified in our five-year consolidated plan as being one of, one of the activities that the consortium would like to undertake to assist special needs populations, and that's what this program would do. And with that in mind, the options before the committee of the whole tonight are to approve the resolution, approve the resolution with suggested changes or not approve the resolution. And staff and the CDC recommend that the committee of the whole forward the resolution to the Urbana City Council with recommendation for approval. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Yes, Jared.
Just one, Matt. Do we know the percentage of where this $30,000 will be allocated towards helping Urbana residents?
That's, it's very difficult to say. In many cases, the people who this is assisting is at Rosenkrantz shelters, transitional housing, things like that. It's, it's tough to get those numbers. I can try to identify where the vouchers are being used in seeing the ratio of Champaign to Urbana to Grantool. I can try to get those numbers. But where the populations are coming from before receiving them, I could talk to Rosenkrantz about that as well and try to get that if you like.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great. I'm just looking at the, the budgeted, at the, in attachment four with all $30,000 being divided up amongst 10 leases, and I figured, you know, there's got to be information associated with each one of those leases.
Mm-hmm.
You know, something. I'd just like to see where it's going.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Yes, Mary Ellen.
I was trying to figure out what this statement meant. So under the fiscal impacts, there's something about, as of May 31, 2017, the 24-month home commitment requirement has been suspended by HUD. What does that mean?
So each, each allocation, yearly allocation of home funds that we receive, we have to enter into a legal agreement to commit that to an organization within 24 months of receiving those funds. That's been something that's really given us a lot of pressure over many years, but just in May, HUD decided to not remove that deadline, but suspend it. Basically, it's staying on the books, but they aren't enforcing it. So we still want to try to meet the deadline of having committed all of these funds within 24 months until they permanently decide one way or the other what to do with it.
And then if we don't meet the deadline, if they were enforcing it, they would take the money back, I assume?
Yes, that's right.
So they're just basically saying, we're not going to come after you for what you haven't committed. Okay.
For now, yeah.
For now.
Eric?
So I have the impression that, you know, HUD's change in their oversight is basically a loosening of oversight, so that less well-motivated municipal, municipal governments than ours could play some games with that. But of course, we won't.
And I've got a question also for you. Of course, I totally support the tenant-based rental assistance, because I understand how important that is. Have we a program, and is Rosenkrantz a participant in this program, if we have it, for tenant-based utility payment assistance?
That is an eligible expense in tenant-based rental assistance. A standalone utility assistance program, I, I believe it has to be, under the home regulations, you also have to be helping someone out with their rents to also help with their utilities. I don't know if a standalone utility deposit, or utility deposit or assistance program is possible through these funds. It would have to be linked in with rent.
So a lot of times, people approach the, those who are teetering on homelessness because they can't meet their rent. But I understand that today, more and more people may be able to meet their rent, but because utility rates keep going up, that's often the, the, having missed utility payments for one or two months for your services to be turned off makes people homeless. And I thought, I was just wondering how easy it was to address that crisis rather than just straight rent problems.
Yeah, and that, that is, utility expenses are something that can be addressed through the tenant-based rental assistance, but addressing that directly, I don't know if home funds are the solution to that.
Okay.
But I can, I can find out more about whether or not that's possible.
Okay. All right, Bill Brown?
I move to send resolution number 2017-10-068R to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Jared. Further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, so that passes and goes forward to the city council. And that could, unless there's any other commentary or announcements, I call us adjourned.